This public forum with the candidates for the Morton County Commission. I am Vanessa Pfeiffer Johnson with the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator. This candidate forum has been organized by the League of Women Voters of Bismarck Mandan and is co-sponsored by Dakota Media Access. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that promotes the informed participation of all citizens in their government. The League does not endorse nor oppose candidates or political parties. There are nine candidates running for election and three open seats on the Morton County Commission. Five have joined us here tonight. Scott Johnson, Cody Schultz, Joel Olson, Sue Bartholomew Belkum, and Bruce Strenden. Thank you all for coming. The audience is invited to submit questions using the index cards provided to you. Viewers at home can phone in questions by calling 667-3237. Tonight only, May 16th, between 6:15 and 6:30, six o'clock and 6:30 tonight. That number again, 667-3237. No questions personally attacking any candidates will be used. This is intended to be a respectful exchange of ideas. Personal attack should be avoided and as the moderator, I will try to stop any such attempt. Our purpose this evening is to provide voters with information about the candidates and their positions on the issues that affect the people of Morton County. Now, let's meet our candidates. I will read a short biography of each candidate. The biographies will be read in the order of the ballot come June. After your biography is read, you will have one minute to tell us why you are seeking election to the Morton County Commission. The first person on our ballot this June is Cody Schultz. Cody, Cody is currently employed as the Business Manager for the North Dakota Department of Emergency Management and has lived in Morton County for 34 years. He attended Bismarck State College, earned a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration from Dickinson State University, and received a Master's of Business Administration from the University of North Dakota. Mr. Schultz is a member of the Adjutant General Housing Rehabilitation and Citizen Retention Grant Committee, the Bismarck Mandan Young Professionals, the North Dakota Mule Deer Foundation, the North Dakota Bow Hunters Association, and Nishu Bowman. Mr. Schultz, you have a minute to tell us why you would like to run or why you're running for commission.
Well, good evening. My name is Cody Schultz and first off, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this event and to Dakota Media Access for covering it. Morton County is entering into a very exciting period. We're seeing growth demographically and economically. And with these new opportunities, there will also come new challenges. And the biggest of these challenges, I believe, is making sure we continue to promote pro-growth policies while also ensuring we retain the attributes that make Morton County great. And this is going to require leaders with skills in and commitment to planning, communications, and fiscal management. Having dealt with flood recovery issues these past five years as the Business Manager at the Department of Emergency Services, I believe I have the required skills of a county commissioner. And I believe with my experience, education, and hard work, I can help guide Morton County into an even brighter future. And I'd be proud to serve the citizens of Morton County.
Thank you. Thank you. Scott Johnson is next on the ballot. Scott Johnson has lived in Morton County for the last six years and is presently employed as an investment and insurance broker, developer of rental property, and also raises registered Angus cattle. Scott is a graduate of Bismarck State College and received degrees in social and behavioral sciences and business sciences from the University of Mary. He previously served on the Burley County Commission, is past commander of the Coast Guard Auxiliary, past president of the Downtowners Association, alumni of the Bismarck Mandan Leadership Group, and past president of the Abused Adult Resource Center. Scott has also served on the Burley County Road Committee, worked with the Burley County Extension in his portfolio, and volunteered for 4H. Scott Johnson is a member of the Mandan Progress Association. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. And again, I'd like to thank you ladies for the invite. My family's lived in Morton County for the last six generations. And I just think that there is a lot of huge potential here, but at the same time, we need to save our culture and the heritage that we have here. With all the growth in the oil industry and all the money coming in, I think it needs to be somewhat controlled and managed. My experience in business and social affairs, I think would lend a good hand in my previous experience in government. And I would be honored to be Morton County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel Olson, we're next. Joel Olson is a lifelong resident of Morton County, worked for 34 years as a livestock dealer, and presently works as a farmer, rancher, and AI technician. He graduated from Elmont High School and attended North Dakota State University for two years. Ms. Joel Olson is a member of the Elmont Commercial Club, the North Dakota Stockman's Association, where he served on the board for eight years. He's a member of the Elmont Lutheran Church, where he previously served as a board member. And Mr. Olson currently serves on the Board of Directors of Elm Crest Manor in New Salem. Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Thank you. I again would like to thank the League of Women's Voters for this opportunity. I first want you to know that I'm not very photogenic and I really don't like to be on television. But when asked why I run for county commissioner, that's probably the hardest question I have to answer. I'm not a very public person and yet I've been a resident of Morton County for 61 years now, I guess, other than a couple of years when I was off to college. All my children live in Morton County. Most of them work out of Morton County. And I just would like Morton County to be here and to see that our infrastructure stays. I know we're in a time of oil scares and, I don't know, zoning changes, everything else. And I've been known, I guess, as kind of a common sense, practical sort of person and I think I can do the people of Morton County justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Strenden. Bruce Strenden is a lifelong North Dakotan and has lived in Morton County for the past 22 years. Mr. Strenden attended Valley City State University and Concordia College and is currently employed with Newman Signs. He has also done, oh, he's as an account executive. He's also done governmental affairs work with Newman Signs. He's a part-time rancher. He has past work in sales, management, and governmental affairs. He's a member of the Bismarck Mandan Development Association, Mandan Progress Organization, Mandan Renaissance Zone Committee, Dakota Zoo, Mandan Rodeo Days Committee, North Dakota Tourism Alliance Partnership, and the North Dakota State Fair Board. Mr. Strenden serves as a trustee for the North Dakota Cowboy Hall of Fame and is a member of the North Dakota Stockman's Association, American Hereford Association, and the American Quarter Horse Association. Mr. Strenden has served one four-year term on the Morton County Commission and the last two years as chairman.
I'd like to echo what the others said and thank the League of Women Voters for hosting these candidate forums. They're very valuable to the community in introducing the candidates. I am the only incumbent running this time. And we in Morton County came through a very difficult period this last year. Prior to that, we had three snow disaster years. So I think you could say in my first term as a commissioner, I definitely had a baptism by fire and water, so to speak. It gave me tremendous experience. I've been encouraged by a lot of the people that I served with and people that worked for the county and friends to run for another term. And as a result of that, I am seeking another term and I would certainly appreciate the support of the citizens in that effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue Bartholomew Belkum has served in Morton County for 19 years and presently works as the Marketing and Outreach Coordinator for Farms, Foundation for Agriculture and Rural Resource Management and Sustainability. Sue has also served the past four years as the Regional State Lead for the National Farm to School Organization. Ms. Belkum graduated from Gackel High School, North Dakota State College of Science, Bismarck State College, and has a Bachelor's of University Studies in Business and Marketing. She has prior work experience as a fiber artist, legislative clerking, managed marketplace of ideas. She was prior, before she was the editor of the Mandan News and as a part of the local foods marketing specialist and was the, and as a local foods marketing specialist with the North Dakota Department of Agriculture. I'm sorry. Ms. Belkum serves on the Board of Directors for Dakota Media Access, BSC Mass Communications, Advisory Board, and the Germans from Russia Cookbook and Tourism Projects. She is a 26-year member of Charity Lutheran Church, served as a Girl Scout leader for 22 years, and is a member of Phi Theta Kappa, Pi Theta Kappa. Ms. Belkum, welcome.
Boy, that sounds like I have lots of things to do. So why would I want to run for Morton County Commission? My relationships with this county were built over the eight years that I was the editor of the Morton County Mandan News. And I probably sat in on more county commission and city commission and planning meetings than anybody up here. And I have a love for this county. I have a love for agriculture. And as we grow towards the future, I work in economic development, but I work in economic development on the ag side. And I would like to see us kind of grow together, the ag and the other industries in the state, so that we don't lose out on our roots, which is very important to me. I care about the kids in this county. I just wanted to be able to say that I was part of this new and exciting next five or 10 years.
Thank you. All right, thank you, all of you. And now we'll move on to the questions developed by the members of the League of Women Voters, our audience here tonight, and our viewers at home. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question, okay? Just so you, just so to make the audience aware, we will be asking one question to three of the candidates. And on the fourth candidate, we will start another question. The candidates are allowed to answer, of course, the question I asked them or answer any previous questions that were asked of the other candidates, okay? So we'll keep it rotating. And the first question, of course, we're starting on the left here with Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson, how should Morton County manage current and future flood issues?
Well, I tell you, they worked awfully dang hard for the last flood because I was a flood victim. I think they've learned an awful lot. I'd have to compliment Commissioner Strenden because he always returned every phone call and I think they all worked very well together. I think with emergency management and coordinating and knowing what to do, because the National Guard didn't even know what to do for the flood and threw up their arms and they came to help us at our home. So I think with the new coordination and the experience and working very well with the city of Mandan, I think keeping up that rapport with the city and how they work together, I think is just going to do nothing but better in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, how should Morton County manage current and future flood issues?
This is an issue I have a lot of experience with. I'm currently, as you mentioned, the Business Manager for the State Department of Emergency Services. I think you have to look at it in phases. Right now, we're responding to the damages that occurred in 2011 and there are a number of projects underway. But as these things are being repaired, we have to make sure that we're, as we're repairing those damages, we're mitigating against future damages. And there are a number of state and federal programs to aid in that. And I know the county is taking advantage of some of them. There's a few projects through the State Land Department and to raise the grade of current roads. So I guess a short answer is as we fix these damages, let's just make sure that we're mitigating for future damages as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olson, same question. How should Morton County manage current and future flood issues?
Well, after the record 500-year flood here last summer, I think everybody, especially along the Missouri River, knows where the high water line so is, I would assume that the first thing we're going to have to do is maybe build up a few roads and a few levees. And then the next thing is that flood not only hit Mandan, rural Morton County, we have several bridges that are probably going to need a little more attention than they've been receiving in years past. And we have some roads that probably could use a little more buildup and whatever. And I'm sure not knocking the current commission, money is going to be the biggest issue and I think we're going to have to lobby the state and probably try to get a little extra help to repair some of this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And question number two. Ms. Belkum, what have you done to educate yourself on the possible influx of oil activity in Morton County?
Well, while attending Morton County planning and zoning meetings of late as well as county commission meetings, you can see that almost every issue that comes before the boards these days has to do with the influx of oil. So while reading newspapers, keeping in tune to blogs, I've not yet had the opportunity to go out to western North Dakota, but you can see the changes in the communities around here. And I do, I'm hopefully keeping tabs on what's going on just by what other people tell me. I know there's two sides to every story, but we really, 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 really have to pay attention to what's coming our way. And I think it's coming sooner than later. The county's doing a good job. They just hired a county planner and they have done some work on their planning and zoning regulations that will hopefully help us out in orderly growth. Like I said before, I like to see that we preserve some of our ag land and quality of life.
Thank you. Mr. Strenden, what have you done to educate yourself on the possible influx of oil activity in Morton County?
In addition to being on the Board of Directors of the North Dakota County Commissioners Association, where I've had very direct contract or contact, I should say, with a lot of the commissioners from the oil-impacted counties, we've also been staying in touch with a lot of the other departments from other counties where they're having to deal with this. And that's very much how we have been in the process of developing a new draft ordinance, which we hope to have finished. Our tax director and her assistant spent two or three days up in the Williston Basin area, visiting some of the various crew housing facilities and talking to the officials up there. And the information that they brought back to us was also invaluable. But I think probably the biggest thing that we have done to this point is to stay in very close touch with the people who've been most directly affected by this so that as we move forward, we can learn from some of the mistakes that may have been made there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, same question. What have you done to educate yourself on the possible influx of oil activity in Morton County?
Well, I think one of the big benefits is going to be with the new county planner, which is going to protect a lot of the building and zoning and being able to check on that everything is in compliance. I think that there are some great opportunities for Morton County as everybody's been looking for retail and having money come back into the community. But I think we also don't want to give up our privacy. And being a rental property owner, it's just amazing that nine out of every 10 calls are people from out of state that are coming here. And we need to control a little bit of that too because we don't know who everybody is. Morton County is just a fun county where everybody kind of knows everybody right now. But there's going to be a huge cultural change and I think we have to manage that in the right direction.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, new question. What is your perspective on how Morton County should establish the, should manage, manage the establishment of crew camps for temporary housing? I can repeat the question. What's your perspective on how Morton County should manage the establishment of crew or camps for temporary housing?
Well, I've had a chance to attend a number of the Planning Commission meetings and the Commission meetings, and there's been a lot of public input on that issue. And I'd say I'm generally supportive of the draft ordinance that's out there right now. I think there are protections on the front end, sufficient fees to cover some of the infrastructure costs and the costs that'll be needed or possibly needed to supplement law enforcement and emergency services. And then there's also a bond requirement in that draft ordinance. And I think that's absolutely necessary to cover the county's liability on the back end if these crew camps come and then move out. So I think the tax director and everyone that's been involved in putting that ordinance together has done a good job and I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, what's your perspective on how Morton County should manage the establishment of crew camps for temporary housing?
I think right now Morton County has a pretty good handle on the crew camp issue. I don't believe personally that we will see a crew camp except maybe on the very western edge of our county. And it looks like the big thing is the fee structure. Policing and probably waste management or garbage control are going to be very big issues with the influx of a man camp. In visiting with some of my friends out in the oil country, you know, man camps are not all bad. I don't think I would want one right next to my facility or my family, but if you can have a well-managed camp and a well-pleased camp, we probably could live with it. It will bring quite an economic boom to the county as far as people spend money and the oil people have money. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Belkum, same question. What's your perspective on how Morton County should establish the management of temporary housing?
I think that they're doing a fine job right now with their new ordinances. I would like to see them passed though before anybody starts creeping into the county and starts building one before they actually have all of the ordinance in place. I'm, I do feel that they've done a wonderful job of researching. They've, you know, not had to test the waters. They went out and they found what they could charge for fees. And I think that that's all going to be well and good. They've left themselves an out by being able to come back again and revisit these permits in a year if something doesn't work out. And I do feel that the consequences of not allowing these man camps in the western part of the county will be way worse because then we don't know where these people are going to be living. And Morton County has lots of parks and we don't want these people squatting in them. You know, I live very close to Harmon Dam and I hear that there's people out there that have been there for like six weeks at a time. So I think they're doing the right thing. They're on the right track. I'm behind them all the way.
Thank you. Mr. Strenden, new question. How would you make the road safe for all users with increased truck traffic?
Transportation is always a difficult issue. Morton County has approximately 1,600 miles of roads. Over the past, really, four years with the flooding and with three bad snow years prior to that, it's been very difficult for our road department, as it would be for any road department, to just keep up with basic maintenance. I know that our county engineer and staff are working very hard on mitigating a lot of the damages that were done by the flooding and also by the snow. They're working on that right now. As we move forward, I'm hoping that the state of North Dakota through the legislature is going to consider taking the motor vehicle excise taxes and once again putting them back into the highway distribution fund. That would greatly assist all of the political subdivisions in the state in having more money to improve the roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strenden. Mr. Johnson, how would you make the road safe for all users with the increased truck traffic?
Increased truck traffic, are you alluding to oil truck traffic?
All truck traffic.
Okay, because I say, you know, corn is becoming king in the county too. And there's getting to be a lot of increased agricultural truck traffic. And that was a big issue when I'm out getting my signatures is, well, if we vote for you, what are you going to do for our road? We haven't seen the gravel truck for seven years. Or visiting somebody today saying that when it rains, their road is very dangerous and wet and slippery too. So I think we need to focus, and I know that's a general thing with all the gravel out there too, we need to continue focusing and not just servicing or worrying about the oil that's coming, but the infrastructure that we currently have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, same question. How would you make the road safer for all users?
It's a difficult question. I know as Mr. Strenden alluded to, our county engineering and road department has had many things to deal with, with flooding and snow issues over these past number of years. And I think they're doing a great job, given the resources they're provided. It's a tough question because maintaining and building roads costs money and it's generated through taxation. So we have to try to strike the, a palatable balance between taxes levied and, and how much money goes back into the roads. But I think we've, we've generally done, the county's generally done a good job to date with that. The one thing I would say is we have to solicit public input in terms if there's areas that are unsafe on the county and township roads, we have to make sure that information is making it to the engineering department and to the commission if need be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olson, new question. How can Morton County attract rural business development in the next four years?
Well, I suppose the easiest way to attract business is tax incentives, which I don't know if business really needs tax incentives. They should be self-supporting. But, but I think especially all parts of our county right now seem like they're kind of open to anybody that would like to come in and set up some businesses. There are, you know, numerous properties or whatever that are available and not always in the right place. But our zoning board does seem to take pretty good care of that. And I don't know, it's, it's a hard deal to attract business. And yet keep the kind of people we want here in Morton County to maintain the rural ag community that we do have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Belkum, how can Morton County attract rural business development in the next four years?
Well, considering that I work with economic development, that's totally surrounded by local foods, which falls into the ag part of the county, I'm thinking that some of the things that we need to do as a Board of County Commissioners would be to encourage people to shop locally and to source food in particular from local farmers. Small and diversified farms like the ones that I work with are kind of at a disadvantage because there are few barriers that need to be broken down, you know? When they make rules at a federal level, they're usually making them as blanket rules for large farms and large corporations when it comes to food and food safety issues like that. But I work with some small farmers and I would like to see more farm-to-school programs in this county. And of course, this might sound self-serving, but small diversified farms, I think, in keeping pace with national movements for local foods would be one way that we could build up the rural communities in Morton County like Glen Allen and New Salem.
Thank you. Mr. Strenden, how can Morton County attract rural business development in the next four years?
Rural business development is, is and has been a difficult issue in North Dakota as a rural state. And I think everyone knows the difficulties that some of our small community has, communities have had just holding on to the businesses that they've got. So I think from a standpoint of Morton County, we're very much an economically driven county in terms of agriculture. And right now, we have two new grain handling facilities, one built in Hebron or being built in Hebron by ADM, and one by CHS in New Salem. Those are unit train capable facilities. And that's the type of development that we're going to see that's going to come from agriculture. But as our population increases, there's going to be business growth in the county, both in Mandan and also in our smaller communities, just being driven by population.
Thank you. Okay, this might be kind of a quick answer, I'm not sure. If we, if it is, we could, I would love for all of you to address this next question. What is your stance on the June 12th Primary Measure Two on property taxes? Why or why not? Mr. Johnson is the first one on this. And that is the Measure Two abolishment of property taxes statewide.
Well, I've never been one to have the fear of the unknown. So if it happens, it happens and you work your way through it. I'm not going to hit any panic button trying to figure out what is going to happen. So if it does, I think that there'd be qualified commissioners and elected officials throughout that are going to come up with the right budget and find a way to survive. I don't think it's going to be life and death like some people are talking. So I'm willing to accept it either direction.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
I'm not supportive of Measure Two. I think as worded, it would fundamentally damage local control of local issues. If passed, local governments are going to have to make funding requests to the state legislature. And they have limited time at this point. I don't think there's any way the state legislature can understand all of the needs of the, I believe there's over 2,000 municipalities in the state if you include the school districts. And what you're going to see come out of that is a one-size-fits-all approach. So not only that, but there's so much uncertainty around the wording. I believe it says that the state legislature must fully and properly fund all the obligations of local government, but it doesn't define what fully and properly fund means. So for those reasons and some others, I'm not supportive of Measure Two.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
As a farmer rancher, property owner who pays real estate taxes, I should be in favor of Measure Two. I am going to vote no. I, I don't think the state of North Dakota is ready for this. I don't think it's going to be a fair way to run our state. I'm really fearful for our local government. And, and the thing that really bothers me, if we abolish the property taxes, all of our out-of-state landowners, we taxes, all of our out of state landowners, we do support pay services, the local ambulance, the local fire districts, all that money that the property taxes generates helps the out of stater or the out of community people just as much as it does the local environment. And I think we're going to have to come up with a better plan or else vote no. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Sue or Bruce, do you have any comments on this? You're officially not having to answer that question?
I do not support Measure Number Two. I just don't think that it's a good thing. And I'm not basing my opinion on this on just my opinion. I've got friends that are brilliant and I've gone to them and they're just, there are just too many questions about it. So I would have to say no.
Thank you.
I will comment on Measure Number Two. I think if you took a poll of the people of taxpaying age in North Dakota, they would unanimously agree that we definitely need some property tax reform and relief. However, my personal view of this is that Measure Number Two is the nuclear option to property tax reform. And I think the fallout of this would last for years. I've studied a lot of the different ramifications of this, and this is only certainly my opinion, but I believe that there would be a lot of things that would be, would really seriously affect government throughout the state of North Dakota. Our legislature right now has a much better handle on where the state is going to be financially. And I think with this next legislative session, if Measure Number Two would fail, I believe you're going to see some very serious movement towards tax relief.
Thank you. Great. Thank you for answering, all of you for answering that question. Moving on to the next question. I can pick on Scott again if I might. What do you see as the biggest strength that Morton County has to offer? And how would you take advantage of that strength for the good of the people of Morton County?
Well, I think hugely, it's the sense of community and the people in the county. I think we saw that with the flood, how everybody has worked together shoulder to shoulder trying to help people showing up that they don't even know. I think that the asset of this county is the people and that the growth that's coming in here, but also the sense of freedom that you do have. And that's why you want to live in Morton County, because you don't have all these stringent rules and things to go by. You're living here because you want that freedom. And I think that needs to be preserved.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, what do you see as the biggest strength that Morton County has to offer? And how would you take advantage of that strength for the good of the people in Morton County?
I would certainly agree that the biggest strength is the citizens of Morton County. Mr. Johnson alluded to the neighbors helping neighbors approach to life that people here seem to live by. And I believe the citizens generally value just hard work, honesty and common sense. Also, there are a number of economic opportunities in the county. Mr. Strenden mentioned the new grain handling facilities in the western part of the county in and around Mandan. There's a great economic base, but there's certainly opportunities to improve on that, especially in the retail sector. And it would be very nice to bring some of that retail business of folks living in Morton County doing their shopping in Bismarck. It would be nice to bring that back to this side of the river. And I think we can certainly take advantage of that moving forward.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, same question. What is the biggest strength that Morton County has to offer? And how would you take advantage of it?
Well, I guess the biggest strength is Morton County is a rural county. Agriculture is the main economic influx. And I think the biggest thing to take advantage, you know, we have clean air, clean water, friendly people. And we do need, you know, we need to come up with ways to maybe processing facilities for some of our products that we produce out there in the rural sector. And of course, we do need to bring some of them people from the east side of the river back west. There's a lot of stuff goes on out west. So I think, you know, we don't want everybody to move west, just all the good people.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Belkam, what do you see as a weakness in Morton County? And how would you address that weakness?
Do you have any easier questions?
Which brings me to the, if anyone would like to call in a question, 667-3237. If anybody out there listening or in our studio audience tonight is interested in supplying us with questions, it is 667-3237 during our forum tonight, May 16th. Does that give you some time?
Yes, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I think one, and I don't know if you'd really call it a weakness, but you know, we have a large county. We're probably one of the larger counties in the state and we're pretty spread out. So there's really challenges to making sure that there's services out in the rural areas, you know, as people are turning farmland into small developments. You know, you've got road issues, you've got busing issues. So that might be something that right now we need to kind of get a handle on. I wouldn't say that was necessarily weakness, but it is a concern of mine that we kind of keep tabs on the growth in this large county so that we can make sure that people have the services that they need for protection, whether it's fire or the sheriff's department or even cable TV like we don't have at our house. Thank you.
Mr. Strenden, what do you see as a weakness in Morton County? And how would you address that weakness?
I'm going to give you this answer from the perspective of being a seated commissioner right now. And I think we have, the commission that I've been seated with the last four years has been just an exceptional commission. And we have made, I think, some great strides. One of the things that I feel we have been lacking is a planner. And it's been, it was mentioned earlier that we have now hired a planner. We're very excited about that and we feel that that is going to bring us really nicely into line with a lot of things that we have already done as a commission and as a county. But we're going to move forward with that. The other weaknesses that I see, I mentioned one of them earlier, and that's road funding. I think that's always an absolute critical issue for a county of our size. And also law enforcement coverage in a county of 2,000 square miles. That's always a concern, public safety.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, what do you see as a weakness in Morton County? And how would you address that weakness?
Well, I think Bruce is right. You know, you have all these roads to maintain and a smaller population where your neighboring county is flush with cash. It is a big challenge. But I think with the planner like Bruce alluded to, two is going to really help. But I also think as we get in more people, we'll get a larger percentage of that gas tax to help we improve. And I think also the labor cost is kind of a weakness point where you have the money to hire and maintain the same status and quality of employees of neighboring counties and also fighting to keep them from the oil rigs too is kind of a soft spot that's going to have to be watched closely too.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schultz, new question. The city of Mandan offered the use of City Hall in order for the county commission meetings to either be aired live or recorded for later broadcast. How do you feel about televising the meetings?
Has to be done. And I know that the current commission now has recording equipment and it's being tested at this time. So I believe that the county commission room is fitted for it, but it's been alluded to. I mean, our county's 2,000 square miles and the county seat is on the far east end of the county. So we have to do anything we can to make sure that we have a two-way street of information. We have to solicit information from the entire county, especially out west. And not just televising it, which I think needs to be done, but we also need to make sure that we're leveraging technology, the website as much as possible to get information out to the citizens out west and getting feedback too. So I think it needs to be done, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, how do you feel about televising the meetings?
Well, I think I mentioned to you that I'm not very photogenic and I'm not really very public, but I would surely not be opposed to publishing the county meetings. You know, the people of Morton County would all like to know what goes on all the time. And we do read the minutes in our local papers and whatever, but I guess if we could see it live, maybe it would be better. And of course, we have the wonderful computer, which at my house is broke about 40% of the time, I guess. But, and I have children that are smart enough to make it run. I can't always do that. But I guess I sure would be in favor of televising the
They can pull up this forum for you when you get home on
I'm sure they will and they'll just, they'll have a great time laughing about, you know, look at Dad. You know, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belkam. How do you feel about televising the meetings?
Well, as a member of the board, directors of Dakota Media Access and a former newspaper reporter, I must say that is all about transparency. When I first started working at the Morton County and Mandan News, there wasn't even a reporter that sat in on county commission meetings. I can tell you that. If they were televised and they're working towards that, they would be a lot shorter meetings and people act a little bit differently when they know that somebody can hold them accountable for what they say. So I am totally in favor of airing these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Strenden, oh, hold it. You're off the hook unless you'd like to mention whether or not.
And I say, if I may, I'd like to just briefly comment on the last question.
Sure.
Recently, we have largely as a result of the flooding that we had this past year and the fact that our emergency operations center is in the basement of the courthouse, we felt that we needed to do some technology upgrades. And we have done so. And we have the equipment in place right now to begin live streaming our meetings. So that, for example, if you live in Hebron, you're going to be able to go on your computer and actually view the Morton County Commission meetings live.
Oh, okay.
We're also going to be able to have those replayed on community access. So we think we're moving in the right direction. In general, though, I have a perfect face for radio and a voice for newspapers. So I'm probably not the ideal person to have on there, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, did you want to comment on being on TV again voluntarily?
Well, I think it's great. You know, I brought that up before. So I think, and I think there's also timing schedules and stuff to get on public access too that everybody has to work with. But I think being able to come back to it and pull it on your computer and fast forward through the boring stuff that you don't want to see is going to be a big asset though too. So I've been 1,000% for that. So I think they're doing a great job.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go back on track now. We have a question from our audience. And Mr. Strenden, you're the first person with the new question. Social services is a primary duty of county government. There's currently a deficit in social service spending. Do you have any plans to help control the deficit?
Deficits with social services are very difficult for a county to control, primarily because the services that are brought forth to the social services department are based upon need. And so whatever they end up spending, it seems like whether it's the state or the counties, because we're kind of a microchasm, a state government in that respect. We do have social services there. So those kinds of things are very difficult for the county commission to control. We can budget for it, but in general, they're probably going to go over budget every year. And I'm not sure that there is a good way for the county commission to be able to control those costs.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, social services is a primary duty of county government. There's currently a deficit in social service spending. Do you have any plans to help control that deficit?
Well, I think being a passboard of the social services, I think what a wonderful, rewarding job and service that provides, and a lot of it is regulated. But I mean, if you can help elderly stay in their homes and not have to go to nursing homes, if you can help the indigent off the street and have a place to live, or the mentally retarded get the care that they need out of the city, I think that's a budget that you have to live with and work through it and help the people. And I don't think they should be cut.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, do you have any plans to help control the deficit?
I would agree with some of the previous comments. I mean, social services is, it's a great service and it's generally going to those who need it the most and most likely wouldn't get it any other way. So in terms of spending, I would just add that we have to make sure that we're looking at budgeting conservatively, but also looking for every funding source, every opportunity, whether it be grants, other state aid, those types of things. But it's absolutely needed.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, new question. A joint jail between Morton County and Burley County is being studied. Do you have any ideas to implement a joint jail or joint services between Morton and Burley Counties?
That's a really great question. A joint jail, I think it would be a wonderful thing for the county that has the jail in. I would assume that someday we're going to come to that, but at this point, I think we would be a lot better off, especially in Morton County, if we maybe do a little work on our current jail system. And I think there is room for expansion. I'm not a dollars and cents, I can't tell you whatever, but I sat in on one meeting where they were talking like a $50 million jail, which to me, that seems like an awful lot of money when we can probably get by in Morton County for four or five million as was mentioned here at the last meeting I attended.
Thank you. Ms. Belkam, a joint jail has been studied. Do you have any ideas to implement a joint jail or joint services between Morton and Burley Counties?
While I don't disagree that working together is a bad thing, from what I understand, that feasibility study is coming back at $50 million. I don't know where on earth, like Joel said, we're going to get that kind of money. I don't have an answer to that question. Without knowing what available spaces in surrounding counties or surrounding even communities in Morton County so that we could maybe partner with somebody on this side of the river, there has to be a way to solve this because I think this is going to be a growing need for jail space in this county in the future. And so we're going to have to decide what we're going to do. And who knows, maybe the federal government will come through with some help for that, that joint jail. Thank you.
Mr. Strenden, do you have any ideas to implement a joint jail or joint services between Morton and Burley Counties?
Well, I think that basically no one likes paying for bad behavior. And essentially, that's what the taxpayers are doing in maintaining not only law enforcement, but also maintaining our detention facilities. It's also very expensive for us to, when we have a full detention facility, to transport prisoners to other facilities where we not only have to expend the transportation costs and the cost of the deputies, but also we have to pay them a daily fee. And as our population increases, the percentage of people who might step on the wrong side of the law is going to increase. It's my personal feeling at this point that Morton County could increase the size of their facility for about 5 million, Burley for about 17 million. And I think that we should continue to have the excellent cooperation that we have between those two sides of the river.
Thank you. New question. Mr. Johnson, how effective is Morton County in working with city and state entities regarding law enforcement?
Can you repeat the question, please?
How effective is Morton County in working with city and state entities regarding law enforcement?
Well, you know, I don't have a lot of experience in law enforcement. I don't hear anything negative about it. When I've used their services, I think they've done an excellent job. But I think getting back to the jail issue, if I could use my seconds on that, I think that spending all this money housing people, I think there has to be some reform in the law because the police and the sheriff are doing their job servicing that. But I've seen where you're putting in people for a $50 bad check and spending $1,000 locking them up in jail or selling beer to minors or where we could have work release programs and put these people out to pay it off without having to spend the $60 to $70 a day. I think some of these fines have to be changed because we're housing way too many people at those expenses.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, how effective is Morton County in working with city and state entities?
To the best of my knowledge, I haven't heard complaints either. I guess I have no real knowledge that there's any deficiencies or areas of concern. But if I may, on the jail situation as well, I think that if but if I may, on the jail situation as well, I think that if, if we do get to a point where we, we're looking at expanding a particular facility and it's looking like that's going to happen and probably within the next five years, just given population growth and the growth in the county, no matter what we do, I think we do have to take some of these demographic studies into, into account and make sure whatever we do, whether it's joint or on our own, that we're, if we're investing millions of dollars, that we're doing it in a, in a fashion that it's going to serve the county well for at least, you know, 20 or 25 years out. So, that would be my recommendation. No matter which way we go, let's make sure we're doing it for a long period of time if we're going to invest the money.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, how effective is Morton County in working with city and state entities regarding law enforcement?
I think as a general, Morton County is, is pretty effective in their law enforcement. I happen to live next to a real small town by the name of Almont, which population 109 or something, but we don't contract per se for a county deputy onsite all the time. We generally have to call in the troops when things go bad, but I think that as a whole, Morton County is doing a very good job so far and I hope that funding continues to where they keep, can keep adding more deputies and whatever if, if and when the population increases. Thank you.
Thank you. New question. Speaking of Almont, population 109, with an aging population and a smaller outranging population, what could Morton County do to ensure they provide adequate social services to its senior citizens?
Boy, that's a very good question and I think that we're going to have to address that sooner than later. Nothing scares me more than the thought of housing prices and rental units going up to the point where people are displaced on fixed incomes. And I do not know what the answer is to that question. All I know is that it's something that we're going to have to be aware of and we're going to have to protect the citizens of this county. And I think that that's one of the things that needs to be addressed when it comes to the growth in industry, whether it's the energy industry or even agriculture, that we're going to have to not run over our citizens while we're doing it. I know that there's a problem even with food pantries and getting food distributed out to these areas and no grocery stores in these small towns. So, there's a lot of things that need to be looked at in this very large county, once again, getting out there, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Strenden, what could Morton County do to ensure they provide adequate social services to its senior citizens?
I feel that right now, our social services department is, is doing an excellent job with a whole variety of programs, but I think as, as time goes on, we're going to have to, along with the state of North Dakota, to look at enhancing some of the home nursing care and, and in-home assistance that's available to keep people in their homes longer and to keep them basically independent as long as we possibly can. And I think the, the elderly are a lot happier in those situations, so I think that has to be looked at. I think the Meals on Wheels programs are just excellent for the elderly. My own parents take advantage of those and I think they're, they're great programs. I think also as we move forward, some of the privately funded housing that's put up for the elderly to really work to get grant programs to assist with those.
Thank you. And Mr. Johnson, what can Morton County do to ensure we provide adequate social services to our senior citizens?
Education. My grandmother was born just off of Mandan, 99 and a half years ago. She passed away last week. She was able to live in either her home or with my mother and we helped take care of her without any burden on the state, like to her last three days when she had to go in the hospital. But I think people have to be educated as we're all living a lot longer, we're going to have to bear some of that expense too. We can't depend on the government, the state or the local people to take care of our senior citizens. But the number one is they have to be allowed to stay in their homes. The in-home nursing care is a phenomenal program that social services have and also the state piggybacks and complements to allow the people to stay in their home, which is a win-win for everybody. They're happier and it's a lot less costly to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Schultz, new question. Morton County has many historical assets and county park assets. These assets have excellent tourism potential. Do you have any plans to promote these tourism assets?
I agree, we certainly do. And I think there are some very good things happening now. I know that in conjunction with, I believe it's Bismarck Mandan Development Association, I believe there is some signage going up on the Old Red Trail for historical, historical sites and I believe there's a phone number where tourists and passerby's can, can call in and get historical information on those areas. And, and those are really the type of things that we have to do, you know, a collaborative effort with some of these associations and, and civic groups out there that really want to preserve and promote these areas. So, if we, if the county and the commission can partner with these different associations and civic groups to promote them, you know, I'm not against the county putting some funding into those, into those efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, do you have any plans to promote the tourism and historical assets of Morton County?
Well, when you talk about the historical assets, of course, I also live very close to the ghost town of Sims, which a very good friend of mine is the mayor and his wife runs the business. But, but I think Morton County should partner with whomever they can. The Old Red Trail is a great deal, you know, Fort Lincoln, we have the, the Danzig Dam. I understand the park board is going to take care of all the fishing. We're going to have real fishing there again in a couple more years and, you know, Grainer Bottoms, I've never been there personally, but I've been by there a lot and after the flood, it, it was devastating, but from what I understand, that's become a great camping area again and a great fishing spot. Yeah, I'm all in favor of Morton County contributing with whomever they can to promote their parks.
Thank you. And Ms. Belkum?
My favorite topic, agritourism. I think that this is an economic opportunity for small towns around here as our communities are growing. According to some demographics I heard lately, there's like almost 11,000 new people in this area. Let's take their money away from them by means of tourism. They got good jobs, jobs are paying better, they'll have a little bit more discretionary spending. I think we should partner with the state and whoever else is around here to promote things like Harmon Dam, the fishing. What we need though, we do need a little bit of river access on this side. There is not really a public boat ramp on the Morton County side and I think that even though the river left a lot of sand behind, there's still people that like to boat and fish and it would be nice if we could develop some of those areas. I know that Harmon's coming right along and yes, I'm all for the tourism aspect in this county.
Okay, that is our last question for the evening. Mr. Strenden, would you like to mention or respond to that about the plans to promote tourism assets? I don't want to shortchange you a question.
I think along with the state of North Dakota, they have, they have done a good job of putting out a lot of brochures and various things that will tell you about the, the various recreational opportunities that are out there. And I think the, from what I have observed, that the state will continue to try to enhance recreational opportunities everywhere in the state of North Dakota from large to small. So, I applaud their efforts for that. I know on the county side, we're very concerned about our county parks and particularly Grainer Bottoms, which was badly damaged in the flood this year, so the county is working very hard to get that facility put back together.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, candidates, thank you for being here tonight. You will all now each have one minute to provide a closing comment, either to reiterate why you're running or maybe to mention something that you wish would have been mentioned. Mr. Johnson, you may begin.
Thank you. I'm running because I have a great compassion for the people of Morton County and I think there's just a great future in this county. I'm a fifth generation county resident and I'm also conservative. I have still bend over and pick up a penny off the street, so if you're looking for a candidate that's going to guard your money and not spend it foolishly, I would appreciate your vote in June. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz?
As I mentioned in my opening and we discussed quite a bit here tonight, Morton County is certainly experiencing a great deal of growth and change and this is going to create a number of different opportunities and challenges and, but I believe the citizens of Morton County and county leaders are in a great position to capitalize on these new opportunities. With good planning and public input, Morton County does have a bright future and I'd very much like to be a part of that process and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
Well, my last comment, I think it should start with maybe my first one. When, when I was first approached about being a county commissioner, they tell me I have to go get a few signatures, so I'm out and about in the county and everybody that signed the petition, they said, "When will you blade my road? When will you gravel my road?" And I guess the roads, the bridges, you know, we need to get our agricultural produce to town. It has to come to town for, for the farmers to spend their money and I hope that everybody, I'm, I'm kind of a rural, rural sort of fella and I believe I, I will probably look out more for maybe the rural people than the city people. I shouldn't be saying that, but, but that's kind of the way my roots are and agriculture is our main business in Morton County and I would just appreciate everybody's support. I'm common sense, I guess, practical. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belkum.
Well, I kind of miss the people that I worked with when I was the editor of the newspaper. I built lots of really good relationships with people from the county, people from the city and have always been really intrigued by how these boards operate. But as I see the changes coming down the pike for this county, I want to be a part of that. You know, it's kind of like something that I've wanted to do and now I have the opportunity to do it because of the jobs that I have. I have a little bit more flexibility to be out and about and to attend the meetings and I'm very excited about this. I, I hope that people will make good choices when they go to the polls and I hope that I'm one of them. Thank you for the opportunity this evening and I'll be around town.
Thank you. Mr. Strenden?
I'd like, like to thank the League of Women Voters again for offering us this opportunity. I have a vision for Morton County and that is to be very careful and cautious in preserving the ranching and farming heritage that's so much a part of this county. And as our population grows and as we have subdivisions going out into the more outlying areas for Mandan, I think it's important that we are very careful with our planning and zoning regulations as we have agriculture and residential colliding. And I think it's also important that we include business development and encourage that within the framework of our planning and zoning rules. In spite of the population growth and the business expansion, I think preserving the western charm of Morton County will always remain in the forefront of my mind and I would certainly appreciate the support of the citizens again this year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wish to also thank Dakota Media Access and the volunteers from the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum. Thank you too to the viewers at home and the audience members here tonight for taking the time to learn more about the candidates and these issues. This program will replay several times on Government Access Cable Channel 2 and will be available for online viewing at www.freetv.org in the days leading up to the June 12th election. Before we close this candidate form, I want to remind you that voting in North Dakota is very simple. You can find voting information at your county auditor's office. Thank you and good night.